I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will call please Casey. Michael, get ready. Jack Hadeen.
Here.
Pete Watkins.
Here.
Monica Stickford.
Here.
Nancy Denzer.
Here.
And Stigney. Carl Sonneman.
Here.
Teagan Brzezinski.
Here.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve today's agenda?
Someone.
Thank you. There's a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. The opposing side. Motion carries. PC, do we have any comments? Thank you. First on our agenda, our student reports. I'll send it over to Superintendent Brzezinski to introduce.
Uh, we're gonna start with our, I think it's our first uh student reports of the school year. So I wanna welcome back uh Liam from last school year. We're gonna have Liam Hunt come up from Winona Middle School. Liam, coming up to the table, please.
Hi Liam, welcome.
Hello, my name is Liam Hunt and I am an, and I am an eighth grader. This year's Winona Middle School Student Council President. Winona Middle School hosted its third annual trunk or treat event on October twenty fourth. Many families and community members attended and donated over one hundred pounds of food and one hundred sixty-six dollars for the Winona Middle School Care and Closet. A space dedicated to school supplies, clothing, hygiene products, and food for students and families indeed. Thanks to these donations, we have been able to help feed over twenty Winona Middle School families in experiencing food shortage. The seventh and eighth grade outdoor sports and rec class classes recently went on a field trip to Winona State University's indoor climbing wall. Eighth grade students in career exploration have recently completed a career research project where they discovered what their dream job is like on a day-to-day basis, the wage this career pays, and the education and training required to enter this career path. The Winona Middle School Unified Program has expanded this year to include unified PE and arts, where unified peers work together with special education students to learn and grow athletic, artistic, and leadership skills. The Winona Middle School Unified Program is designed to empower students to help create a more inclusive and accepting school environment for all. Winona Middle School was also a top contributor for the Polar Plunge, which will help fund the United, the Unified Program. Winona Middle School students and staff raised over ten thousand dollars for the Polar Plunge event. Currently, all seventh graders are preparing for their annual field trip to the Nun three theater to see A Christmas Carol after reading and studying the play in language course classes. Sixth graders completed an egg drop challenge this week where they had to work with a peer to construct a vessel for an egg to survive a drop from the second floor of Winona Middle School. The deeds classroom is having a sticker design contest for their plant pots to be placed on each plant so they are building their brand. Deed students are also wrapping up their social studies unit on the Constitution and Bill of Rights. Students will begin writing about the value of safety versus freedom and deciding how they would create a utopian society, which connects back to the class novel they just finished, The Giver. This also compares to their science ecosystem studies. Students will question how politics can impact ecosystems and relay that into the laws of their simulated utopian society. Mr. Senior, our eighth grade science teacher, was awarded with a grant with supplies fifteen thousand dollars worth of STEM kits for students, including catapult kits. Eighth grade, eighth grade science students will follow instructions and troubleshoot using the science and engineering design process to construct a working catapult. Students will then use the catapults to design and conduct scientific experiments involving kinetic and potential energy, trajectory angles, trajectory angles, and mechanical advantages. This year's seventh grade science classes will be participating in trout in the classroom. On December third, they will receive trout eggs that will raise the finger limbs and release into the white, into the white water river on May thirteenth. Students will be learning about how the trout's life cycle and habit, inhabits its needs. And five Winona Middle School choirs will perform on Monday, December eighth. Please join to celebrate all hard work these singers have put in throughout the first three months of the school year. Fifth grade choir performs at five forty-five P M. Sixth grade choirs perform at six forty-five P M. Seventh and eighth grade choir performs at seven forty-five P M. This is also a great opportunity to check out our new auditory acoustic shells in action. The seventh and eighth grade choir is also planning to attend a music, a music field trip for the first time since twenty nineteen. The seventh and eighth grade choir will be traveling to the thrills in, the thrill and thrills music contest hosted by Valley Fair. The day will include a performance and a music contest, a workshop with a guest director, and of course, some fun at the Valley Fair. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Liam.
Thank you.
And then we'll have Teagan Brzezinski for the high school. Teagan, I guess you could move over to the presenter's table here for a moment.
Alright, my name's Teagan. I'm a junior, as you know. So even though the high school isn't on a quarter schedule, we're on a semester schedule. We just finished up what would be the first quarter of the school year. So classes are in full swing and winter activities are just beginning to start. So a quick overview of the fall sports activities, just by sport. Volleyball had a good season. They had an overall record of eight and seventeen. Football, they lost in the semifinals in sections to Byron. They had an overall record of three and seven. Boys soccer lost in the section finals to Northfield. They had an overall record of ten, eight, and one. Girls soccer lost in semifinals to Casson-Manville. They had an overall record of five, six, and eight. Boys cross-country qualified to state with their top finisher taking second at sections, and this was Kendrick Uchek. He took fifth at state then to earn all-state honors. And cross-country's overall record was a hundred and twenty-one and eighteen. So what that means for cross-country is, since they don't like just go against one team at a meet, the one-twenty-one means that that's how many teams they beat the whole season, and then eighteen is how many they lost to. Um, and then similarly with girls cross-country, they qualified to state with their top finisher taking second at sections, and that was Izzy Kotwak, and then she went on to take thirty-fifth at state. And their overall record was also a hundred and twenty-one and eighteen. Um, girls swimming, they had two state qualifiers. They were Abby Williams and Piper Jones. Piper took eighteenth in the five hundred free at state, and then Abby took eleventh in the two hundred IM and fourth in the hundred breaststroke, where she also set a new school record. And then girls tennis took second at team sections, and then Andra Ahor and Anna Bricko won sections doubles, and they made it to state where they were eliminated in the semifinals. And then some major recent events. There was a blood drive at the high school on October twenty-ninth, and a lot of students, staff, and community members all came to donate, and this was organized by NHS President Kylie Pollack. Um, the polar plunge happened on Tuesday. There were a hundred and thirty-eight plungers in total, and almost twenty-two thousand dollars were raised for adaptive activities in the district. And then just last night was the turkey dinner, and there were five hundred and twenty-five meals reserved to be served. And there were volunteers from student council, the district staff, NHS, and from the community. And then some highlighted events that have happened just at the high school recently. Obviously, homecoming was September twenty-second to the twenty-seventh. The theme this year was Windhawks Shine Brighter Than Stars, and that was celebrated with the school-wide pickleball tournament, the parade, which was the largest in school history, the football game, and then of course, the dance. For this year, our schedule, on A and B days, we go to advisory for half an hour. And this year, students have been doing M C I S activities, and these are like college readiness activities that trying to get kids thinking about what they might want to do post-high school. Um, and then things to look forward to, this weekend is the um Winona Senior High School Theater Group. They're performing The Wizard of Oz. If you want to go to that, it's seven P M. on Friday, seven P M. on Saturday, and two P M. on Sunday. And tickets can be bought at the door. It's seven dollars for adults and three dollars for students and seniors. And then similarly, the band had their fall pep concert at the middle school on October twenty-sixth, where all the bands from grades seven to twelve came together to perform pep music that would be performed at like football games or rallies and that type of music. And then looking forward is the ten days of giving event. That's gonna be at the high school food drive from December first to December tenth. So overall, there've been a lot of really good things happening recently with a good forward motion going into the twenty-five and twenty-six school year. Thank you.
Thanks, Teagan. Thanks for supervising Alexis and Jackie. Appreciate it.
Jackie thinks you're working on the turkey dinner while you're here too.
Oh.
Yeah.
All the things out there. Getting some loose ends tidied up.
Next on our agenda is information. It's just an update on the school-based clinic. We've got Anne Rebal and Maddy Spouts here.
I think all of our members of our already heard about our school-based clinic, but it'd be good to come back. I'm not gonna go through the whole presentation, but get some updated information and some statistics about our clinic data. So I'm gonna let um Maddie Spouts from Winona help give an update on our, on our data.
Yeah, so we've had a really good start to the school year. Um, to remind everybody, we are at the high school two half-days a month. The middle school, we expanded this year to two half-days per month. Jefferson, one half-day per month, and the ALC, one half-day per month. Um, another big thing this year is last year, towards the end of the spring, we started counseling at Jefferson and the ALC. We've now expanded counseling to be at the middle school that started in the fall, and then just in the last couple of weeks, we expanded to the high school. So we are at the ALC and the high school, one full counseling day every other week, and then middle school and Jefferson where they're weekly for a full day. Um, so we're super excited to be able to provide both clinic and counseling services to the students here at the lots. Um, just some updated data, since we sent the presentation, we ran some new numbers. But so far, we've seen a hundred and thirty-one students um across all of the schools from, and that data was pulled October twenty-seventh is what I have up to until then. Um, huge increase. When we started tracking data two years ago, we saw thirty students in the fall. So as you can see, that's a very large increase. Um, we're hoping to see that same increase in the spring and then total as well. And then other updates, um, we went to a Minnesota School-Based Health Alliance Conference last week. Um, two of our providers attended as well as myself and Anne, um, and we were able to hear from different school-based clinics, see how others are running theirs. Um, and something that we took away was when you've seen one school-based clinic, you've seen one school-based clinic. Um, they all run very different, um, but it was good to hear from all different climates and how people are doing.
And I'm gonna interrupt there, because I also want to acknowledge that Maddie was highlighted as one of the administrators of the year for the work that she's done at Winona. And so I want to thank her for that and acknowledge, I thought she knew about the work. She didn't, so she was surprised that day. So it was nice to be able to acknowledge that she's doing some amazing work at Winona, and we're lucky to be partners with her, so.
And then with that, um, because of when we were talking about the state, um, we have a state student advisory board. Um, so this is made up of various students from around Minnesota school-based clinics. And one of our student advisors on our local high school student advisory was, she applied, was interviewed, and accepted a position on the state board. So that was a huge win for one of our high school students as well.
Another development that we had this fall is we've been awarded an additional grant for three years for an additional two hundred thousand dollars. Um, this is really nice for all of our sites. Right now, we have additional financial help at Jefferson and at um our extension clinic here at the, or the ALC for some free services if families don't have insurance. This grant will allow us to expand that to all of our states and to do some, we're gonna be doing some updating at the middle school and continue to expand that. So um, that allows us for more stability for the future and keep, um, keep our numbers up and our accessibility um open to all the sites for all the families. Right now, families can go to the different site if they want a service and to receive it there, but they can't stay at the middle school and have that benefit, so that's a positive for us as well.
And other fun updates, um, we continue to work towards a building an art mural here at our high school school-based clinic. Um, we've had some bumps in the road, but because of bringing our new counselor from Winona Health to last year, I did not realize that she's a professional mural artist. Um, and so she's gonna be um teaming up with the A K art students here at the high school to help kind of like lead that project. Um, and we're using some of our funding from our private grant we received last year to fund this work. So that's some other exciting work in um being able to do this and have these ideas to make these clinics better. All come from our advisory groups, including our student advisory, which Teagan also sits on. So um, it's, we appreciate all the student input that we get on these projects.
The other thing that's coming up, as soon as our pre-dental clinics, and I have that highlighted in there too, and I just want to bring that to our attention. We're partnering with Children's Dental, who's part of our advisory, we have our advisory council for our school-based health clinics. So we partner more, um, with more programs and just Winona Health, but we'll have some dates available coming up. We're on a six-month cycle with them. They come in the summer, and then they'll be here this winter as well. And we're signing up students already so that they can um have their cleanings done and infant care done in our schools, so. Um, that's always a good thing to share out in our communities too. Sometimes we see children come that aren't law students, and we accept them too, because we know that all children need to have those needs. Those are our updates. Any questions?
This is amazing. Really nice work, everyone. So thank you for that, Director Hadeen.
Yeah, thank you. That's just really exciting to hear about. Um, I do have a question uh from the briefing materials that we looked at. It appeared that uh that uh this fall attendance or participation from students was down quite a bit uh from previous years. But what I'm hearing from you is that was outdated. There are new numbers that are showing quite the opposite, that there's, that you've added this additional uh opportunities at the different spots, and people, uh, students are taking advantage of that.
Correct.
So uh, yeah, because it looked like it was just the opposite trend, but uh that was old numbers.
Yeah, and we saw a little, we see a little bit of a dip with Jefferson too. We had a strong start there. It usually takes about three years to really get numbers going, that's standard. But with the reconfiguration, some of the families that we were serving shifted. And so that impacted it. So it's building that foundation again will take a little bit. So we did see some dips at some of our sites, but they're on their way back up. That was bound to happen with some of our families moving. Some of our families moved to the middle school, and they're continuing their services, and our numbers at the middle school are growing. So that's something that we expected that would happen with the shift that we did in the buildings this year.
And that is something that we identified for particular students who were continuously using Jefferson Clinic last year are now middle school students. And so that right there, we knew of some pinpoint students that were using that. Um, the clinic, like we said, at Jefferson has been um not utilized as much. Counseling, however, we have a waitlist there. So counseling is um is taking up at all locations.
Terrific. Thanks.
Thank you. Director Sonneman.
Yeah, when we talk about funding, um, I'm glad to hear about the grants you're getting. I appreciate that very much. It makes me wonder though, is there discussion at the legislature, uh, either that we already have permanent funding, uh, year-to-year appropriations, uh, or that there's more discussion that the legislature recognizes the value of these clinics and is going to put something in either funding or our levy authority that we could uh have a sustained uh means of keeping these clinics going.
And one big update that we got in terms of, so outside of my role with the school-based clinics, I also oversee nursing services for two charter schools, and I do all of our quality and data reporting to insurance companies for Winona Health. Um, and something that might not be familiar is when we see a patient, each patient gets codes dropped on them. So like a well child code or um an ADHD follow-up code. Um, our state school-based health alliance board is currently um lobbying for a specific C P two, C P T two code for school-based clinic appointments. They're hoping that insurance companies will slowly start to realize and acknowledge this new code and hope that the visit doesn't cost as much. That's still in the early stages, but that is one update that we got at the meeting last week. Director Sonneman.
Yeah, I can follow up on it. Do I understand then that rather than looking for a state flow, we could look toward an insurance-based flow? But Emma, do you get much insurance funding at the present, or is that to be looked to in the future?
It's billed similarly as a regular appointment, appointment would be. So that is the difficulty is if a student's insurance is not covered at Winona Health, they're not covered at our school-based clinic.
I wouldn't go into the.
Yeah. Director Hadeen.
And Winona Health does all the billing to insurance and yes, okay.
Correct. So we bill to insurance, and then anything not covered by insurance, right now at the ALC and Jefferson is then billed to the grant. So money goes towards patients deductibles, but the grant covers that. The new grant and head address, that will do the same, but for all four schools.
To go off of Director Hadeen's question about open appointments, um, happy to hear that uh the, the numbers are, are, you know, catching up to, to where they are. Do you find this, the challenge with open appointments being more awareness, scheduling, or staffing, or a different?
It's an awareness thing. The staff is ready to go, that is on their schedule, but if they're not filled, then they pull out, because they still need to, they have other places that they can be. We've done some outreach this fall as well. We have a parent advisory board that helps us with outreach as well. We meet monthly with them. Um, we've done some door knocking in some communities. We had a pizza meal. We've partnered with a couple of other community um partners, like um Kids First at Maplewood Town Homes. We were in touch with them. They did some door knocking with us so we could share the information for families. We're at parent-teacher conferences. They're promoting the dental clinic at those as well. Um, they're putting it out in our newsletters. It's just getting the word out and getting the understanding that it's really for everybody. Um, and we're confident that they can build back up, but additional support for the community helps.
Yeah, and the, the population has changed at Jefferson too, so that's something to be considered.
Good new families that came over weren't used to that service, and so this is new to them. So you know, it's, it's getting that comfort level and acknowledgement that this is part of their new building. Um, it took us a little while to get Jefferson families to sign up last, when we first started.
We also send weekly emails, we, myself sends weekly emails um to all of like my appoint people in the schools and let them know like, hey, if you know a student needing an appointment, we have openings next week. So we're trying to keep um staff involved, and I have seen some appointments get scheduled after I send those emails.
Final question uh for me. Uh, so the, most of the metrics that we saw in here was based on, you know, patient counts, you know, just kind of like who we're seeing. Is there any other metrics? And I'm sure it's there, but do you find other other metrics to be useful, specifically like looking at student achievement or, or like is, are there ways that we capture that data to see that kind of benefit?
You know, at the um state conference last week, I went to a couple of sessions with other schools, and you know, they're trying to capture their attendance rates too. A lot of it is assumed because students aren't absent for a full day when they go to the clinic. If a family has a drive, even for a dental appointment, some of our families have to drive to Rochester. That's hard data to always track, because our data from Winona Health is separate. We're not sharing student data for data privacy rights. Um, so even with the other school districts that I'm talking to, it's inferred data. It's not concrete data. And so that's something that we'd like to track, um, but because we have our data privacy laws, we can't track the attendance of specific children that are just being seen at the clinic, because that's their, they have privacy rights there. We're not crossing over our databases. Okay. So that was a discussion, so it was not unique to us. Um, a couple of the other um districts that I met with are trying to identify ways to do that. Yeah.
That's all I have.
We track twenty-five different points of data, but it's all health-related. It's not school-related.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for um all of the work that you're doing and all of your staff too, and congratulations on your award.
Thank you. Yeah, we're pretty fortunate to partner with them.
Yeah, yes, we really are. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, we're gonna keep Anne up here. Next on our agenda is the Community Education of Excellence Award that Anne's gonna present.
Yeah. She didn't bring her award tonight, but she really does have. So, yeah, so I am here in a dual role tonight, so I'm not, I'm running the head of a community education director for Winona Public Schools. But part of my role as the Region One Board Representative for Community Action of the State is to also give out the awards in Region One. So tonight, I get to honor Linda Jacobs, so it's my honor to do so. Um, and I have to share, when I told Linda that part of my role is that I would like her to be at the board so I can present her to the board, she said, well, what should I say about my programs? And I said, Linda, this is really about you. It's about the work that you do and what you bring to our community. Um, that right there talks a lot about Linda. She's important to me, so this could be hard. She's amazing, and she brings community, and she's humble, and she is always so positive about how she does it. So I want to hit some highlights of Linda, and I want to make sure I don't miss anything. So she's been a steadfast leader and advocate for community education at both the local, state, and regional level for over twenty-two years. In southeastern Minnesota, she's known as the driving force for adult enrichment and adults with disabilities. She collaborates with neighboring districts. She helps guide state Sunday events. She brings a smile and a sense of joy to every meeting, every event, and every day-to-day interaction in the office. She embodies the sense of community. She serves on local communities that support committees, that support childcare providers. She just hosted her, our Fall Regional Childcare Provider here at the high school. She is part of, a leader in our district wellness effort and our broader, broader community initiatives. She deeply understands that strong partnerships expand opportunities for learners. She has connections for our district with U S Fish and Wildlife, NAMI, Red Cross, Winona State, um, Winona County Human Services, and countless other businesses and programs that she partners with. She's a tireless advocate for adults with disabilities. She's innovative. She's compassionate. She's always pushing for inclusiveness. Under her leadership, adults with disabilities partner with Winona Senior High School. They are welcome at sporting events and at other activities in our community. She makes that happen. She's a driving force behind our Winona Wellness Committee and a skilled grant writer that is um supports monies and funds for community education, but also for early childhood all the way up for Winona Senior High School. Our new outdoor classroom has Linda Jacobs handwriting all written. Um, she has been an unmistakable influence, and she reflects her passion in all areas of WAPs for all of our learners. She's a mentor. She has guided many Winona State students that are social work majors and on, and her programs. She helps them explore their career paths, develop their skills, and builds their confidence. We're blessed to have you do that. And um, in true community education spirit, she brings people along. Her family volunteers her, her friends volunteer her. Um, she recruits wherever she can get. So if any of you ever want to volunteer, um, and feel really good about what our district is doing, come to some of Linda's programs. Um, so I could keep going on about you, but please um join me in celebrating this award for Linda. It is a region. It is, she is one of the nine people that were um celebrated in the state this year, and she deserves every, every accolade that she gets. So, thank you, Linda.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She can give you data about her programs too, so.
Truly was an honor to be at the state level and representing Winona. What I was sharing with Anne is it's amazing the things we do here. You know, people consider us a smaller community, and as I listen to everyone in the metro and listen to everyone statewide, we are doing so many wonderful things, and it's because we have just the most amazing community ed programs and so much community support. So honestly, I appreciate um that I've been able to be here for twenty-two years and represent Winona. So thank you. Do you have any questions regarding my programming?
Um, I don't know that we do, but um we know where to find you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Um, next on our agenda, we've got um Director Slavi to come up. And then we've got Nancy, you're still with us?
I'm here.
Alright, um, I'll let um Director Slavi introduce this. This is our audit, and we're not, we are um accepting our audit this year, just a little different than what we've normally done. So um you can start with what you're gonna present.
Sure, I'm there. Yep, I'm happy to report that we have another year in the books. Thank goodness. It's a nice feeling to get that done and, and taken care of. So we have Nancy, and I'm not but your name. Sha, Scholzenberg? There's a few more. Phonetically, that's correct, but we just say Schulzenberg. Schulzenberg, okay. Thank you. Here via Zoom to walk us through the audit sign, or results and uh feel any questions that you might have for us, so. Take it away, Nick. Alright, thank you, Sarah. Good evening, everyone. Are you able to see my presentation? Yes. Okay, perfect. So I want to start out tonight spending a little bit of time talking about the independent auditor's report. And you can find this in its entirety in the front of the financial statement document. But this is the most important communication that we issue as part of our audit. It is our responsibility to express an opinion on the district's financial statements, which are management's responsibility. So what we're issuing this year is So what we're issuing this year is an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion we can provide. And it is an indication that based on the results of our audits, the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. Uh, so that's what you want to see in the front of your financial statement document. And then we have a few other communications that we traditionally issue as part of the audit as well. And the first one's gonna be our report. Related to government auditing standards. So government auditing standards are required by the state of Minnesota. It's written statute. And they require us as auditors to look closer at internal control and also compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, grants, those types of things. And based on our work, we just have one uh significant deficiency, and that is the lack of segregation of accounting duties. So that's not new for Winona. And that's not at all uncommon for school districts across the state of Minnesota. When we look at internal control findings, we have three different levels that we're um encouraged or allowed to place our findings in. And a significant deficiency is gonna be a middle level finding. So definitely less severe than the material weakness, which would be the highest level. But just does warrant some attention by you as the governing board for the school district. We did not note any noncompliance related to those standards. And then we have a preliminary report related to the single audit testing that we did, and it's in preliminary format because we don't have the final guidance from the federal government as of today. So right now we have a draft and we use that draft to complete our test work and we're anticipating an unmodified opinion on compliance. And also no internal control findings as it relates to that. When we get that final guidance, we'll take a look through it, make sure we uh tested everything that we needed to, and then we'll issue those reports at a future date. And then our last official letter is are gonna be our report on Minnesota legal compliance. So this covers seven broad categories of legal compliance and how those state statutes relate to accounting matters. And based on the work that we did related to that, the test work that we did, we did not note any findings there as well. So really just the one um written finding for the overall financial audit. So congratulations on that. And then we have a separate document titled a communication letter. And in there, we have four basic sections. The first one is gonna be our required communication. Those are things that our standards as auditors say we need to put in writing to the governing body of the Winona School District. And we include things like responsibilities. We talk about estimates that are used in the financial statements. We discuss the risk um that we look at when we plan and perform our audit. Um, it would be our tool if we had any diffi- difficulties or disagreements or anything significant that we uncovered. And happy to report nothing strays from our standard language in that area. And then in the back of that communication letter, there's a legislative summary. So the latest from uh the Department of Ed. And then emerging issues, which is the latest from the Government Accounting Standards Board. So light reading, especially if you have trouble sleeping. This is a good place to go. And then the middle of the document is the financial analysis, and that's where we'll spend most of the time this evening. All right, so taking a look first of all at the General Education Aid Formula Allowance. This is your largest funding source. So it's important to take a look at um some trend information. So starting with the basic formula allowance, we give you ten years back and then one year forward. Uh, that's all we know at this point. So you can see that two percent is a pretty standard increase, and that's what you did receive for twenty twenty five. Um, two point seven is what you'll be getting for the current year that you're operating in twenty twenty six. And then the other part of the calculation has to do with your student count. So we have lots of charts and graphs that look at those student counts in a lot of different ways. And we start in this chart looking at the residents. So these are the students that live within your district's boundaries that attend public school. So it's gonna be charter schools, other local districts, and then your district. Um, private school students are not part of this this number. So when we look at the five years, overall, you're down about eighty two. So relatively stable when you're looking at a five year picture. And for twenty twenty five, you did have a little bit of an increase in the residents up about thirty five or one point one percent. And then we have that information uh again, but in a graphical format. And you can see the relative stability over the five years, especially the last four years. Those are very similar amounts. Um, dipping down just a little bit each year through twenty twenty three and then small increases for twenty four and twenty five. So to calculate general education aid, we take those residents, weight them by their grade level with the secondary students receiving an extra twenty percent. And then we factor in the effects of open enrollment, and that's what you're seeing on this slide. So we have weighting factors on the top of the chart and then the activity, starting with your residents, um of an increase there about thirty two. And then or thirty five, excuse me, and then the not the residents going elsewhere. Those are the students that open enroll out of Winona. Twenty three students coming in from other districts, leaving you with just under twenty six hundred in um enrolled students on a weighted basis. So that is up just about three. So very consistent with twenty twenty four numbers. And if we look back to twenty twenty one, uh you'll see a little bit bigger decrease in these numbers than you did in your residence. That's down about a hundred and fifty two pupil unit numbers since twenty twenty one. And this graph is gonna give you a percentage year over year change. So you can see each of the years through twenty twenty three decreases, increases in your residents, and for the first time increases in both residents and students served in twenty twenty five. So hopefully that's a trend that you can see going into the future. Switching gears then to take a look at some actual dollar amounts, starting with the general fund sources of revenue. So overall, up about three point seven percent or just under one point seven million. If we look at the categories, there were definitely some fluctuations. So on the top of the bar chart are other sources. That includes your local funding, so donations, investment income, those types of revenues, and also federal. So you'll see that being a bigger piece of the pie for twenty two through twenty four related to the pandemic funding. Twenty five, that number decreased about twenty percent related to the end of that funding. So down about nine hundred and fifty three thousand in that category. Driven primarily by that change in federal funding. In the middle, those are your state sources. So this highlights how reliant the district and all districts across Minnesota are on the amounts that come directly from the state of Minnesota. For twenty twenty five, that number was up about one point eight million or five point nine percent. And that came across a lot of categories. General education aid was up. Special education aid was up, and then you had some smaller new amounts for the REED Act and some increases in the summer unemployment, those types of things. And then on the bottom, local property taxes, that's your levy. So that number was up about ten percent for twenty twenty five, just based on the levy in the general fund. All right, so we have two pie charts here that show you your expenditures for each of the last two years. Um, different than the revenues, expenditures were actually down uh about one point seven percent. And that had to do with some increased amounts that happened in twenty twenty four. So not that programming changed or anything like that, but you had significant amounts spent on non-instructional devices and a wifi upgrade in the prior year. And then you also had fewer students that were um higher need that were attending buildings outside of the district that you had significant costs related to. When you look at where you're spending your money, that's very consistent year over year. If we take your instructional categories, special instruction, vocational and regular, those make up sixty one percent of the total for each of the years presented. So over the half, half of the amount of money you're spending each year is going directly to instructing your students. Okay, general fund budget actual in this chart. Um, so originally you had anticipated about a five hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase in fund balance. That budget was amended throughout the year, um reducing that increase. And then you did outperform that budget in the actual column, which is third from the left there. The variance column, I think it really tells the story. Um, and if you look at total revenues, total revenues were over budget by five hundred and forty one thousand, which is one point two percent. So very, very close to what you had anticipated. And the largest variance is in your state sources, and that has to do with conservative budgeting for those student count numbers. Um, and then also some of those miscellaneous new revenue streams that came in throughout the year. Expenditures, um even closer to budget. That's a point six percent variance. So it really can't get a lot closer than that. When you're looking at a forty four million dollar budget to be off by two hundred and forty three thousand, pretty close. Um, the largest variance in the expenditure side of things is in instructional support, and that just had to do with lower purchase services and also supplies and materials in that area than what you had anticipated when the budget was approved. This slide's gonna give you a snapshot of the general fund, so really high level look at the activity for each of the last five years. So we talked about the fact that revenues were up, expenditures were down, so you did have an increase in your fund balance for the first time since twenty twenty one. Um, up about nine hundred and twenty two thousand overall. On the bottom portion there, you'll see we have your total fund balance at five hundred, I mean, excuse me, five million, five hundred fifty five thousand. And we subtract out non-spendable. Those are items that have already been purchased for next year. And then we have the restrictions. Those are all the state mandated reserves. So things like operating capital, long-term facility maintenance, um there's a whole list of those. And that gets you the unassigned number, which is what's available for the future. And um that did increase just under one point two million after the low point in the five years occurring in twenty twenty four. So you see decreases in that number through twenty twenty four and an increase in twenty twenty five. So your policy does outline eight to ten percent of your operating expenses and your current fund balance is at seven point seven percent of those operating expenses. So you are below that overall fund balance goal of eight to ten percent. And then we have that information in graphical format here showing you total revenues, total expenditures. And I think the highlight to take away from this one is that twenty twenty five is the first year since twenty twenty one that the green bar was above the blue bar. As far as um revenue succeeding expenditures. So that is the general fund. And then I just have a couple additional slides to take a look at your special revenue funds. First of all, food service. So revenues in this fund were down a little bit. Expenses were up a little bit. We have increasing food costs, um but pretty close to a break even year. Decreasing fund balance by about ninety eight hundred dollars and ending at eight hundred and twenty thousand, which is about thirty eight percent of your expenditures. So a healthy fund balance in the food service fund. Oops. And then we have community service. So revenues and expenditures in this fund did increase. Um, you had revenues over expenditures for the fourth time in the five years that we're looking at here, and fund balance went up about forty four thousand. And the changes for twenty twenty five just increased programming and participation, so driving up both the amounts coming in and going out. The bottom portion of this chart does show you all of the categories of fund balance that are required by the state of Minnesota. And you can see all of those are positive and have been positive for each of the five years. Not a picture that we always see. So uh it appears that funds coming in are covering the cost of each of those programs. And that is everything. I'm happy to take any questions that anyone might have.
Questions from board members? Director Watkins?
Well, I've been on the board a couple of years. Uh, you mentioned the segregation of accounting duties and that's not uncommon to Winona. How long has that been? How it's predates me, probably predates a lot of us on the board. Do you know, and I know your um firm is very really new to looking over our books, but how long is that? How how often have we seen that in here? I mean, it feels like it's pretty pervasive.
Yeah, I I can only speak to the history that we have with the district and it has been a finding each of the years that um I've been part of the audit. And I think I audit about fifty schools. And I probably have two, which are very large school districts that don't have this in written format. They do have it as a deficiency. I don't have anybody who doesn't have it as a deficiency in some manner. So it's it's what you need, what you need to eliminate the finding completely is someone that is strictly oversight, but has a complete understanding of what goes on day to day in the operations. Because just that access alone, even with not a lot of responsibility, it creates an issue with segregation and internal control.
And the the two districts you refer to, the the solution there is they just have a bigger staff. They have more people. One of which is dedicated to the role that we don't have people to.
Right, right. Yeah, one of them is dedicated to just oversight. Without any day to day responsibilities as far as transaction or reconciling or year end reconciling, they're just strictly. Uh, you know, they might do budgeting and those types of things, but they're strictly oversight when it comes to the financial statement and on that reporting and day to day finance operations.
Any other questions, Director Watkins?
No, I just, I guess when I think about the numbers, so there's fifty, you're you're referring to fifty districts, forty eight have this. Or you'd say is a problem or at least a deficiency. Keeps happening year after year. It's it's just an acknowledgement of a situation. Um, it it just feels like there should be some other plan B at some point, like. I mean, obviously in the state of Minnesota where we've got things that people are paying attention to now, it just, it feels like um there just should be a solution somewhere, you know, beyond what this is. And I know it's not for accountants to fix. It's not for an individual district to fix.
Right.
Forty eight, they need some some demerit on their report card. You generally start looking at the report card process.
Right, and I think the the um the thing that that I would like to stress to you is that there is there is um a lack of segregation of accounting duties in, you know, that middle level for Winona. So that's an awareness that you as board members need to have when you're looking at financial information. And you know, you're keeping an eye on those things as oversight, um because you do have that lack of segregation.
And that's kind of my final point, whether it's us or the other forty seven districts you referenced. At the end of the day, it's it's on us. It's on the seven of us. If something goes wrong, correct?
Ultimately.
Any other questions, Director Simon?
Yeah, I just ask a question. I look at the five year period you considered in here. And I mean, my general observation of it is that it goes back to the COVID years. In particular, the financial uh aid that came through the COVID relief funds.
Yeah.
Are you making any notations, I'm not talking about this report specifically, but in reports generally, to recognize the impact of that and how we move, we're slowly moving out of that uh the that those situations within financial reports?
Um, other than just a discussion, an overall general discussion in your communication letter, no. Um, the financial statements themselves don't right now. They will next year allow for some commentary about reasons for changes and differences in budget to actual. Uh, but right now, that's strictly facts. So these are your revenues for the year. And what we put in the communication letter is for communication. So to give you a perspective on trends and an understanding of where the finances have been. Um, so when you're looking to the future, you can gauge uh where those funding sources are and and um changes that are happening.
Any other questions? All right, we um have all the documents that we need in front of us. And I would um want a motion to accept the audit at this time. Simon?
Yeah, I knew that we accept the audit for the uh twenty four, twenty five uh fiscal year uh received from a Bergen TDB.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Henry. Any other um comments, any other questions? All right, Nat, Director Simon?
Yeah, I just make one comment. And and we've talked about this in in considering why we are using the word accept. And I think it's wise to recognize that we don't have the expertise to go in and say that we are approving an audit of this nature. Um, we've looked it over. We understand it. To the best of our understanding, it meets all the standards. We've asked uh Director Slavi if she has any questions or concerns or comments she wants to give us. Um, and I'm real comfortable saying we accept it at this point.
And just an additional note, uh we did meet with Nancy also via Zoom at the Finance Committee last week. So we've had several different opportunities to to look at the information, to ask questions of Director Slavi and of Nancy. So appreciate your time and and effort in uh helping us understand any of our questions. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, propose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you so much, Nancy, for joining us.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for allowing me to do this virtually. And before I go, I just wanted to um give a thank you to Sarah and her team. They were prepared, very well prepared for us when we came into the audit, so we appreciate that. And with that, I will let you to your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we've got Director O'Brien to give us a briefing item. This is a CAC ER report um this year. It's changed names, so it's the second time we've seen it in this format.
Yes. Um, good evening. Uh, yes, I'm here to present the Apprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness Report. As Nancy mentioned, it used to be called the world's best workforce. Uh, but it's the same thing. What it is, is just Minnesota's effort at the legislative level to help districts align all of our goals and priorities around student achievement. Um, and so this is, this is what we do with it. Uh, this is. Um, so these are the main goals you can see on this slide as well here, and that is that all children are ready for school. All racial and economic achievement. All racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed. All students are ready for college and career. All students graduate from high school and prepare students to be lifelong learners. That's a new goal. So we have a baseline goal for that this year. So the state likes to keep the goals lofty as as we need to as a state to keep our expectations high for students. We also include our REDACT goals specifically in the CACR report. Because we report them all the same too, and we want to make sure that we are just as a wide community measuring these goals together. The CACR report is, although it's presented and submitted one time a year, this is a report that is worked on all year round. So we work on the plans with multiple stakeholder groups, with administration teams, teacher teams. We work with the building instructional leadership teams, which are teacher leaders in each building, who you saw earlier in the fall to present goals. Also at the PLC level, which is professional learning communities and grade level teams and department teams and individual goals as well. We have our literacy team, which is new this year, who also contributed to these goals. This is our slide that we bring back every year. This is the equitable access to excellent teachers. And we do this just ensuring that we have a way of looking at to make sure that all of our buildings have equitable access to teachers. So that would be experienced educators, meaning three years or more of experience. Licensed educators being tier or tier three or four licensed educators. And then we measure that with advanced degrees as well. And we want to make sure that our schools of the highest poverty rates, for example, have that equitable distribution. Our demographic data from our goals being assessed is listed on this slide here. We have our REDACT goals then too, starting with our REDACT goals, our goals from last year. We had a spring two thousand and five goal that by two thousand and twenty five, each grade level will increase the percentage of students meeting literacy benchmarks as measured by the Fast Bridge Assessment by three points from fall two thousand and twenty four. And so what we found here is that in grades K four, five and six and seven, we did not meet the goal. However, grades one, two and three did meet that goal. When we look at our literacy goal that's moving forward, we have that at least sixty three percent of WAP students in grades K through eight will meet or exceed the grade level literacy benchmarks. Or if grades are close, grade levels are close to that, they'll increase the percentage by three percentage points from fall two thousand and five to spring two thousand and twenty six. A reason for, one of the reasons for the goal changes or the language of this goal change heavily had to do with just the teacher work and teacher leader work at the build tables around what they wanted to see this goal as. We are working very hard to align all of our goals as a district too and just support the teacher leaders and their vicious goal setting, which is why we we chose the sixty three percent as well for our district goal. Just a note about what we can expect from dual-language immersion. This is something that we want to put on everybody's radar for looking at goals too. What we have in a Spanish dual-language immersion school with students of all language backgrounds is instruction ninety percent in Spanish and ten percent in English. So what typically happens is students will start at the kindergarten level with the fall reading benchmarks and they'll score high. And then without a year of instruction in English, at the end of the year will be pretty low. But this is to be accepted, this is to be expected of all dual-language immersion programs with how the model works. And how the model works is that evidence shows that students who are in dual-language immersion programs will be typically are performing peers who are not in dual-language immersion from all different language backgrounds, once again, by the middle school. And I just want to point out that our data and our dual-language immersion reflects that evidence-based data as well. And so you can see here as an example that our kindergarten Rio students had started out eighty three percentile and then now in grade one. This is not the same group of students, by the way. This is just looking at one year down to ninety one point nine or twenty one point nine percent meeting proficiency. And that a number growing till the fourth grade, seventy six. Another just look at what we can expect from dual-language immersion. You can see three, third, fourth and fifth grade MCE scores here. Fifth grade has the eightieth percentile. Sometime, something that everybody wants to keep in mind when we're looking at what our literacy goals are and our math goals are is that eighty percent of students proficient is considered a healthy tier one model, meaning healthy tier one instruction is happening in those classrooms. So that, looking at fifth grade meeting, meeting that healthy tier one instruction model for our students. Now we move on to our all children ready for school. This is kindergarten students measured in the in the fall time. We had our benchmark that by fall two thousand and twenty five, the percentage of students meeting kindergarten benchmarks will increase by three percentage points reading, reaching seventy five. We have, we did not meet that goal. However, we are keeping that goal high and the expectation high for fall two thousand and twenty six. So we're aiming for that seventy five point five. So these next goals measure achievement gaps. We look at two different socioeconomic group. We look at socioeconomic status and then we look at racial groups for this goal. So this one is between white students and students of color. So we want to see achievement growing between both subgroups of students. However, we want to see an increase, more of an increase in students of color in order to decrease that gap. So for this goal for spring, we had three percent to close the gap by three percent, which we did not meet that goal. And we are keeping the three percent goal for our goal for two thousand and twenty six. So the next one is looking at socioeconomic status. And so our goal for spring two thousand and twenty five, the achievement gap between students will decrease by three percent for socioeconomic status. So once again, we want to see both subgroups growing in their achievement while also closing that gap. We had our non-low socioeconomic students, the percentage of students meeting proficiency grow. However, decreased with our low socioeconomic student group, we did not close the gap there to meet our goal. We are keeping the same goal for two thousand and twenty six. So all students are ready for college and career. We measure this school with the personal learning plans, which is a part of our MCIS program, which is our college and career-ready pathway that students take throughout their high school experience in advisory programs. So it does things like student career interest surveys and and planning for students in what their career goals are or their college goals are. There fifty eight percent of students in ninth grade had successfully started their personal learning plans as measured by our data systems. The high school, they don't hundred percent trust what their data is or their reporting systems are. So they're really working now to to tidy up what some of those systems are. And we are keeping that goal of making sure that hundred percent of our students are able to start that PLP, the Personal Learning Plan Pathway by the end of ninth grade, be prepared to keep on working out through it throughout their high school career. All students graduate from high school. The percentage for our goal is that it will increase by three percent. We had our two thousand and twenty four graduation results that were released in May two thousand and twenty six as eighty nine point five three percent. So we didn't make that goal. However, we still are above the state average, which is about ninety, ninety four percent proficient. So our graduation goal, we are keeping the expectation high for graduation at ninety two point five percent for the high school and forty two point thirteen for the ALC and then eighty two point three four for district-wide. Something to note that this, this is still the cohort that is working under twenty seven graduation credits to graduate. The two thousand and twenty six class will be the first cohort that is coming through with the twenty one and a half credits. This is the trajectory of graduation rates over time, which is a helpful document to see. So historically, the Winona area public schools has been above the state graduation percentage levels with an upward trajectory over the last few years with a slight dip this past time. So in, with our new baseline goal, our new goal, preparing students to be lifelong learners, we are going to be measuring that with our avid planners. We chose avid planners as a way to measure lifelong learners because of planners' ability to help students with organization, self-management, accountability. And it supports that reflection as well and just getting up, setting the support systems up for life success. So what the high school do to measure that goal is they'll work with all of the advisory teachers to ensure that there's the regular planning of it on a regular basis. And then we'll just measure on the the last, the last month of school, what that percentage is. So in looking at what the goals and action steps are to achieve these goals, with everything that we align, we work within our strategic plan and within our MTSS framework that supports academics as well as social, emotional learning and positive culture and climate. And so everything that is represented within here will be worked done with the built teams and the built goals, which were all presented to you back in September. And then, once again, you've seen this slide several times along with those built goals too. These are our district-wide goals. In a nutshell, this is around our guaranteed and viable curriculum within a positive climate and culture, meaning that we are continuing to ensure through our curriculum work and through our instructional practices that the all students have access to the same learning from classroom to classroom and grade to grade, as well as all students learn it. Our literacy action steps in particular, we have some new things in place that we are feeling very confident for. And so one of that is that we have new literacy coordination roles. So one of the, we have Jay Wooler, so who is our good view principal, who is also serving in that role. And Erica Upton, one of our instructional coaches, will be overseeing it at the secondary level. We have our addition of our CAPD read basic screener for characteristics of dyslexia to be measuring students who need additional support at the secondary level in particular. And new Fast Bridge Universal Screeners now in high school as well. We have a new supplement for K two reading. In our literacy work that we have been doing, our current HMH resource was rated by the Kering Center and the MDE REDACT as partially aligned to REDACT. So we wanted to look into having a core resource that can better support our quality literacy instruction that we need to be providing for our students. And that came through with our Bridge to Reading, which is a program that is rated highly, highly aligned with the REDACT goals. And it's also free. And so we began working on that with our KN one teams and then our grade two team is partially using it too. And so we are, we are really excited about that as a new supplement to support our reading development at those primary grades. We're continuing our professional development with letters and core learning Ola. We have most of our teachers in our district who have taken that rigorous training. And then we're continuing with our FAST and PRESS interventions in grades five. We'll be developing that intervention programs in grades five through twelve. Are there any questions about the CACR report?
I just note that this is our briefing, but it's also for public comments in case there are any comments. That's what we, it's a requirement that we make this. That's why we've got two sets of public comments here on the on the agenda. Director Watkins?
I may have heard this wrong or have it wrong in my mind, but you talked, you were speaking about the high school and the data collection process. Would you be the one that'd be able to give us more insight onto? It sounds like there's room for growth or something didn't go right. Is that your role or would that be somebody else?
Yes, I do. We are working on a different data collection system because there's just some doubt with the MCIS collection system that was being used for that. They, the high school is reaching out to the state for some more support about that. But but that is something that we need to look into to clean up and perhaps use a different method for gathering that data to measure that goal.
What does that system produce? What data? If it went, if it was going, if it was not in that situation, what data would it be helping?
Well, what the students start to do is a survey, an interest survey. So what the data would show is that they've started that electronic system to start that survey. So when they went to look into that, they found that only fifty eight percent of students had had started or had a profile started on that.
Director Simon?
No, I have a couple of quick questions. One of them, and I want to just ask this in the broadest way I can possibly ask it. And that is, I've been reading in some of the basically news coming out of national news sources that there's a real concern about how the COVID fallback in learning. We've not been catching up on that on a national basis. Give you a chance to talk about that both frankly, locally, of course, but frankly, the state of Minnesota. I mean, my impression, I'll give you my impression, which is that we're nowhere near as in dire straits as some of the national literature I'm reading, that we're doing much better. But I'll give you the chance to use your expertise to kind of straighten that out if you can.
Well, Minnesota does have one of the highest achievement gaps based on race in the nation. So I think, but Minnesota is also very aware of that. So that's a positive thing that we keep that high on our radar and that we're very public about that. So just in terms of comparison, there's a lot of different ways you can compare data points or data systems. However, what I see is really promising across the nation is this, this approach to adopting REDACT-type legislation. It is very aggressive. Legislation is unprecedented for states to be doing, having that much legislated control within school districts, but it's very promising. States that are doing this are really turning around their state's reading proficiency. And so if you look at all the states, especially some of the southern states who are sitting at the bottom percentile in the nation who are now, you know, fifteen, sixteen percentile, I mean, fifteenth and sixteenth place, I should say. So I do look forward to what Minnesota's results are going to be as we further progress in the REDACT and with the incredible amounts of support that the state is also providing for increasing literacy gains for districts.
Oh, are we doing here is what maybe I'm trying to ultimately get to.
Oh, here in Winona?
Yeah.
I, we have definitely have room to grow and we want, we want to hit that eightieth percentile for that tier one. And we're on a, we're feeling very positive about our, our ability to do that.
One other question. I wasn't, maybe I'm not quite following and I just need an explanation of this. But with ready to, ready for school, how did we, how do we fit into that? Because given that, I mean, I know there's pre-K education in Winona, but by the legal education we provide starts at K. And my rough understanding of it is that what we're looking at is how ready a child is to begin that K year.
Yes.
So what do we, what responsibilities does the district have pre-K then to fill that in? And when you see numbers like you're looking at, I mean, how much of that is something we control?
Yes, so not a hundred percent of our students did it in kindergarten, it didn't come through our preschool system. So we know that's true, but but we just work within our preschool to make sure that our practices are evidence-based. And our preschool does have high amounts of success with preparing students to be ready for kindergarten.
And for those students who we don't have involvement with, I mean, is that where the problem is coming from?
Well, we have in the past separated our WAP students from our non-WAP preschool students. We didn't do that this year, but we have. And we didn't do that this year, but we have found historically that our WAP students do very well with kindergarten starts.
Do you want to present?
Yeah, I have two that I just want to make two, two quick points. Number one, really proud of the programming that we do have at the preschool level. I think to Director O'Brien's point, our preschool students are well-prepared to enter kindergarten, period. I also think that yes, we have students that are in a wide variety of preschool experiences, right? From a very structured setting to, to faith-based environment to, you know, in-home settings, et cetera. Of course, across the gamut. But I think that, and this is a credit to Director Rebo, trying to re-engage our larger community in that conversation about birth of three and what that preschool experience might look like regardless of where a student attends. Ultimately, no, we don't control every one of those pieces, but if we can help kind of lift the, lift the quality across the entire community, I think that is a responsibility that we, we should take on.
Okay, I thank you for that. I think it's important we articulate what we're doing and what's going on.
More questions? Director Henry?
Yeah, thank you. Just like some more information on the lead act, REDACT literacy goals. Can you provide me a little more information on the 63%? And then I know that you had mentioned that you wanted to respect, I've jotted down what you said. You don't want to dismiss the building teams, PLC or teacher leaders. But can you just explain that 63% goal and then also speak to that four part? Where each grade level will increase the percentage and can you just provide me a little more understanding on how we got there? How we got to that point?
To 63%?
Yeah.
Yes, so 63% came with quite a bit of discussion at our built days in August with teacher teams. And it was a very dynamic discussion about high expectations for students. It was actually really exciting to be, to hear that discussion. We just know how, how teacher efficacy is one of the highest predictors of student achievement and what teachers feel like they can do and what their students are capable of. And so looking at our built goals and just participating in those discussions on the built teams about the 63% was, was our main motivation for also choosing that for our REDACT goals. A second thing is, is that, that we know that when we're watching to Carl's question about what we're seeing in the nation for the, for literacy scores rising, one of these indicators is this legislation and this push for structured literacy. And it's a nationwide approach. And we're seeing that now we're going to have to even erase that 80% as what the healthy tier one model with quality, high structured literacy approaches because students are having so much success with it. So some of those proficiency numbers of what we can expect are also rising. And so just with that information as well, we just, we, we want to prioritize keeping our expectations very high, even if it means that we have less of a chance for, for meeting that goal on our CACR report.
So I've had a part of these conversations for many years now and this, this issue continues to come up about achievable goals compared to expectations. And the board has typically sided on achievable goals. And that's not necessarily what I'm hearing tonight is that we're having high expectations of hoping we can achieve those goals. So I guess that rounds into my question about accountability. If we don't receive, you know, if we don't achieve these goals, who owns this? Is it, is it your department? Is it those built teams? Is it those teacher leadership teams? Is it the teachers? Is it the PLCs? Where as a district can we see the accountability when we don't achieve goals?
Well, student achievement is a part of the accountability of all of us and our collaborative systems. And so, once again, it is a number and we want to be doing better than 63%. And so just with that in mind, that's, that's just what we keep working towards. And if we come in and we increase that total percentage of student proficiency and we come to 60%, well, if we've, if we've increased that total percentage of students achieving that proficiency mark, then that's also something to celebrate.
Thank you.
Director, take food.
Okay, so some of my questions was along that line, then you've already talked about how we establish these goals. One of the things that I heard you talk a lot about in your report were goals that were not met from 2025. And I was jotting notes down quickly. One of them was, you know, did we meet our REDACT goal for 2025? When and?
We have REDACT goals for every grade level.
Yeah.
So we met them for three grade levels.
So my, my concern then is also with that growth comment. It's a lofty goal. We didn't, but the majority of our grades did not meet that last year. What are we doing different this year that makes us believe that we will achieve that this year?
So we, we believe that with our implementation of our screeners and 912 and our higher accountability for foundational literacy skills in every single grade, as well as our particular roles delegated to supporting the implementation of the, of the practices and intervention programs. And the addition of the Bridge to Read Reading Supplement is a highly aligned resource and support for teachers around that is being just some of the pieces of work that would help increase those goals.
Do we believe that to be more of like a lagging indicator, like when you say those things, like specifically like the use of screeners? I look at that as a discovery tool. But would we necessarily see that positive impact this year? Again, wanting to?
Not this year, but starting, starting to look at that. It'll be the first time that we're looking into being able to know what the reading struggles are at upper grade levels and then planning for intervention systems to address it. But this is not something that that will happen overnight to be able to take time to implement that.
Director Watkins?
Would your staff be able to speak to with the reconfiguration of our school, the dynamic now of having a kindergarten center? How, how does these expectations and goals lay over that change? I mean, I'm assuming that's been talked about within the staff. This is going to be different, you know, the, literally the first level of touch to our district will be going through a school structure that we haven't done before. Is there, as a staff, is there anticipation it'll get better? It may not, you don't know? I mean, I know that's a big question.
I think that the reconfiguration helped tighten collaboration because, well, for example, kindergarten can all stay together and they get 15 more minutes of PLC time each time. And so that was one benefit. And then, yeah, so larger grade level teams and two grade level teams instead of three. It just all helps with collaboration.
Folks in the community have reached out. I think one of the challenge, one of the dynamics is it's a loud environment. Like it's, it can be, it's a, it's just, that's the dynamic there. But there's also the opportunity, as you mentioned, kids are all, one grade is going to receive very similar learning. Like, I'll go back to my original question. Do we think that that will, what effect will that have on this? You're saying from a teacher's standpoint, it's going to be a positive, it is a positive because of the ability to collect. Do you have any idea on how it'll affect like the students themselves? Like, do we have, again, do we have just any expectations of effect on that?
Yes, it does have a direct impact on students because during PLCs is when they collaborate, they have data, student data inquiry, and they talk about how their students are each performing and what they're doing to increase learning with each other and they're sharing successful practices. I was with the team, for example, last night and, and they were, and a teacher was sharing about a success rate with the Bridge to Read. He said, quote unquote, "It is impossible for students to fail with this," to his team. And then all the team was super excited to hear more about what that was and what his, what that routine was that he was finding so much success with. And so that's an example of, of just the, the collaboration that increases student results.
And there are specific like pull-out spaces in Goodview for students to go into and be able to, if they need extra reading help or something like that, it's not all, not all the open concept, is that right?
In which?
Specific to Goodview, the kindergarten center, students that are getting like pull-out help in reading.
Yes.
There are spaces they can go into that are, are walled, that are quiet, that are different than the open concept.
Yes, there's, well, they currently have setups so that they can have students for reading interventions in quieter parts and small tables and small group work.
Yeah, if I can just add one, one quick point to that, I think, you know, certainly the, the proof is in the pudding, right? We have, we haven't seen the data yet, you know, other than the initial fall screening. But what I will say is that historically, our kindergarten numbers have not been strong. We've been very disappointed, quite frankly, in what we've seen in terms of growth across the kindergarten year. So this is our opportunity to start to turn that trajectory. And again, we, we don't know yet, but we certainly hope and will we see it this year? I hope so. Will we see it over the course of the next two or three years? I certainly hope so. But what we've seen in recent years has not been a standard that we feel good about.
Director Henry, the director?
Okay. So you started the presentation with access to teachers with the licensure, see if they can get there, experienced educators, licensed teachers and advanced degrees. Of course, this is in the high percentages, which is great on paper. Is there a direct connection with teachers that have that tier three or four experienced teachers or advanced degrees when it comes to literacy achievement, closing opportunity gaps? Do we see data that that actually makes a difference, just rather than just a stat on paper?
I have never broken down data that way in our, within our district.
I'd be curious, like, because you know, what I see advanced degrees, I just usually see it being a different, you know, from the teacher contract, a different K scale. I mean, I haven't actually seen the data showing that it shows improvement in the classroom, which I don't know where, how or how you would collect that data. But I think it's important that, that when we have this amount of teachers with advanced degrees or presented of, of tier three or tier four, that, that, that should mean that there's more skill and more learning that they have obtained to have a direct impact to student experience.
Director Hadid, did you have comment?
Yeah, but yeah, I'll just try to come up with just to distill to two, two questions. I may have misunderstood you before, but this idea about added screeners for reading proficiency, that's at higher grade levels because certainly this is going on in, in K through four, I imagine. This is where students identify as title one, for example. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay, so the added screeners are for which grades? I tried to understand.
So are, currently we have screeners in K through 12. And prior to this year, we had screeners K through eight. We had the fast bridge screeners K through eight. We have an addition of the CAPD read basics, which is for characteristics of dyslexia for grades four through 12 that is new this year. So for the high school, it's all students for a fast bridge and all students for the CAPD read basics, the screeners.
Okay. And then a couple of follow-ups are related. I believe it's the Bridge to Reading is a supplementary program that you're adding. Is that right? Or Bridge?
Yes, we're supplementing our HMH curriculum with the Bridge to Read. Yes.
Bridge Reading, okay. And that's new this year as well, or is that?
Yes.
Yeah, that is. All right. And so go back for me for just a moment on to the fundamental question of the curriculum itself, the reading curriculum itself. How many years has the current curriculum been in place?
This is the fourth year that it's been in place. So what the state did with the REDACT is the state was obligated to evaluate core resources in literacy. So they had, and so they worked with the Carey Center from the University of Minnesota to do that. And they did very rigorous analysis of all, all the curriculum that was submitted. And the HMH, and then they rated each component that wasn't rated, that was rated partially aligned, highly aligned or not aligned. And so we got that report back. So our, our teams are working with that report to see, okay, this is where we need to do some real curriculum work. For example, vocabulary, vocabulary, there's too much vocabulary in HMH. It doesn't support evidence-based research that shows how much vocabulary can reasonably be learned by students over the course of a school year. So teams are, would be, are working with that report and they'll look at, in their PLCs to look at, okay, so what is the vocabulary we're going to expect? How, and just for that guaranteed viable piece, they have to see how much do we, what words are we going to expect students to learn by the end of the week and then over the course of the year with their pacing work. With our phonetics, our, for the foundational components was rated as partially aligned. The phonemic awareness was rated highly aligned from HMH. However, the Bridge to Read is highly aligned in all of the foundational skills. So it was a matter for the teams, they, we would, we didn't just make everybody do Bridge to Read. It was, okay, do we want to do the curriculum work that we need to do with HMH to make it highly aligned according to the Carey report? Or do we want to consider an additional supplement? And so the K and one shows that we want to do the supplement. It's all highly aligned and it's, it's very easy to follow and the kids really enjoy it. It's highly engaging. It's, it's, it works on a, doesn't work on a cyclical scale, works on a mastery scale by skill. And the teachers are really liking that. So it's just looking very promising for being able to, to help us with those reading proficiency scores at the, on the, in the primary grades.
It's very helpful, but I just, just so I really understand this precisely. You're suggesting that the decision to add a supplementary program of the Bridge to Read rather than working on individual components of HMH to bring them into full alignment. That decision was made by you in consultation with, with the K through four staff. Is that fair to say or was that?
Our literacy team all looked at, okay, how are we going to present this for, for teachers knowing that we're choosing this additional supplement as a possibility? And yes, that, that was presented to the teachers of, okay, this is the work. If we want to keep HMH, this is an option to, and then the choice came from that. Is there something else you want to say about that? So basically, yes, it is, it would be quite a significant amount of work and we, they could do that work if they wanted to choose to do that work, which some of the teams are, are doing. In like third and fourth grade, for example, there's, there's less changes that need to be made. So it's very reasonable for third and fourth grade to just work with their HMH, which they've already been doing anyway in the last four years.
Okay, all right, that's very helpful. Final, very, very quick one here. Do we get an, does the board get an update from you progress report mid-year? Or is it just a, is this, is this a once a year situation? I'm new to the board here.
Yes, well, we talked about doing a quarterly report, not quite a quarterly, but after each of the testing windows, doing an update of that report.
The fast bridge windows you're talking?
Yes, so we could do it after winter, the winter testing, and then after the spring.
Okay.
Director Henry?
I hear more about the Avid planners. What grades are we seeing those Avid planners? What is the, the buy-in on those planners based on like, what does it look for each grade level? And what, how do they do those planners? Can you just talk more about that, please?
Yes, so Avid planners is something we implemented last year across all the grade levels. Previously, the middle schools had them for several years now. And we did homemade planners, just in-house. And so, and now we had Fasinal donate all the planners. So they're very nice, they're very professional looking and we have them K, K-12. And they're pretty standardized, like so kindergarten might decide they want to do their own planner. We might have to do that in-house, you know, next year, just depending. We'll have to work with that this year, but they are pretty standard across the different grade levels. But they're nice quality.
Who, who monitors the, the work that's being done in the planners if we're using it as a, as a goal?
So well, teachers are monitoring it because the teachers are, are practicing this organizational skills with students for their, for each of their classes and the homeroom teachers at the elementary level. And then once again, we determined at the high school with the new goal would be advisory teachers who are really watching that.
Okay. Are we, how's the buy-in on that? Do, are we hearing people appreciate the planners? Are we hearing more complaints about the planners? What's the feedback?
Yes, I mean, when we first implemented it, there was a little bit of, why are we doing this with young students? But now we're not hearing that as much. And I have heard some like, okay, this could be better for the primary grades, which, you know, so that's where we might do a little bit more work, but for the most part, people are very positive about it.
And it helps with those soft skills too, just keeping organized and everybody can improve in that. So I think teaching people how to keep organized is a positive thing. I just get concerned about the, the buy-in of like how with efficacy, is it looking the same from classroom to classroom, the, the same, you know, appreciation of the planners? And, and it's probably hard to. And, and it's probably hard to, you know, to how to, how to monitor that is probably difficult.
Director O'Brien?
I'm, it's a case study of one, but I can speak to one student in my household. They really appreciated the planner and I put her in a position to have success in college and beyond. And we'll be graduating in about six months from now.
And I have a second grader that's currently using the planner.
It all of it works.
No, and, and it's, that's where I find it interesting, just like what, what the feedback is on those planners.
Director Simon?
Look at the, uh, read basic screener for characteristics of dyslexia. And wonder, are, are you looking at that at all in the broader characteristic of neurodivergency? Uh, characteristics of neurodivergency that contribute to difficulties?
Uh, well, my guess is that it would capture some of those pieces of it. There's the one, yes, there, there's four components of literacy that's in, it's capturing in particular. So it is more detailed than the fast bridge A reading, for example, that's just measuring comprehension. It's actually measuring, um, some of the foundational skills for older readers, which is the first time we've done that.
Yeah, while I'm concerned with neurodivergency can be more than dyslexia. I mean, it can be attention, it can be even, um, uh, noise volume, you know, quiet, you know, need for quiet room, need for, uh, various attention, need for just recognizing the, the differences in learning style of the individual and so forth. And all of that can contribute to, and I mean, I hear of examples of students who just, because they're not recognized, they don't do well in the standard approaches that are often presented. And I'm wondering, you know, if we look at dyslexia, are we going to look beyond that at neurodivergency, you know, across the board, what it is?
Yes, I mean, we would, we would be able to take, uh, and look at different skills according to what, uh, it might be measured from a literacy assessment. And if a student had it on their IEP for testing, excuse me, accommodations, then they would have something like, um, you know, quiet room to take the test in or things like that, that would be dictated by the IEP. Um, to, according to what the student's needs are.
What do we do if this student doesn't have an IEP?
Uh, for testing accommodations?
For, yeah, for a student who has, is, you know, is having difficulties, but there's never been diagnosed, you know, doesn't have diagnoses, doesn't have assignment to an IEP plan, et cetera.
Well, there's some, a lot of tests now have built-in features that help support, uh, different accommodations, have built-in accommodations. For example, are not timed or, um, but not all of the, uh, all the components or are adaptive.
All right, I don't know, unless anyone else?
I do, actually.
Go ahead.
So we haven't really dived, dove into the achievement gaps, um, between the racial groups and the socioeconomic statuses. Current, uh, what are the current countermeasures, um, that our strategy to try to, um, work on achieving the goal? What specific interventions are we looking at?
Well, specifically, if we're increasing the achievement rates with good quality tier one instruction, that is the primary vehicle we're using for closing our achievement gaps. It's just quality tier one instruction.
I, I have a couple. Uh, I'll follow up a little bit on the REDACT goals. I, you know, I think my concern, I mean, I've heard it already from, from other board members, is if I look at the rules, Director O'Brien, that we have for our grade four through eight, there's a pretty large discrepancy between that group of students achieving sixty-three percent and our K through three students. Like, there's, you know, the fourth graders need like a four percent increase in order to reach sixty-three. So that, that older group, I can certainly see that they, this is achievable. This is a goal that, um, you know, maybe eighth graders with a nine, you know, a nine percent goal is, is maybe a little more lofty. But it seems to me the discrepancy of trying to, you know, have a reasonable expectation that our K through three students can achieve it's to sixty-three percent in a very short period of time during the school year is, is something that, and I, you know, I think Director Han, ready is right, we have gone, you know, the board has gone, you know, along with having very lofty goal and seeing the results being disappointing to having a more realistic goal of seeing, you know, something that's reachable, something that our students, um, and our staff can, you know, can actually achieve. So I'm, I'm really concerned about, you know, setting not only our students up to, to not be able to meet these goals, but our teachers, you know, likewise, that we're putting something out there that does not seem, you know, I just, I can't see, um, our first graders jumping thirty percent, um, thirty-three percent. That I'm just, I'm very, um, just aware that that causes, you know, other ramifications in, in what are, you know, we're doing in our classrooms and, you know, while I think it's commendable that we want to, to reach that, it, there is a big discrepancy between our expectation of four through eight and our expectation of K through three. And I'm, I'm just concerned that if we accept that, well, it might be on, you know, the accountability of our staff and, you know, and everyone here, it's also an accountability of the board, you know, that we're, you know, that we are, you know, approving something that we also believe can, can be achieved. So I'm, I'm concerned about that. I'm likewise, I'm concerned about the ninth grade goal with, um, our students doing the career college ready. I, I understand that perhaps there's some external controls that we need to look at to shore up our, um, percentage, but I'm also, I think, maybe more curious about what are our internal controls? You know, these students are, they're doing this, uh, personal, personal learning plan in, if my understanding is right, in advisories. So it's, you know, across the board at the high school that our students, you know, a ninth grade student said that's where they're getting this, um, ability to do this inventory. So I'm, I'm concerned that we, that we have a plan, a really, you know, good plan for internal, you know, controls and the, and helping, you know, make sure that our students and our staff have what they need to be able to achieve this. So, and I understand planners, I think they're great. I just don't know that there's a smart goal attached to it, because it still is, you know, my, like Director Watkins, you know, his daughter's getting to graduate and go to college. I wonder how we measure that, um, in addition to, you know, second graders and third graders. I, I love planners, I think they're awesome. But is that, is that something that we really can have goals associated with it that we can, you know, really effectively measure and report back, you know, at the end of the year or next year?
Yes, just that, it's a curiosity I have. I think that'll be a good thing to, to assess at the end of the year and see. But, um, the high school is feeling pretty confident about being able to measure that because they have their thirty-five, I think it is thirty-five advisory teachers. Um, and they have their meetings where they can set those expectations and they can actually just physically check, check the planners. Um, so that they are feeling confident about that, but we'll see.
Tegan?
Um, I don't know about like a school level, like of goals for the planners, but on a student level, there is like a page each month that students have to fill out. It's like an academic goal and a personal goal and like how they're going to achieve it, like the steps they have to take. And the advisory teachers do look at that when they check planners.
Nice, okay, that's good, Tegan.
Yeah, thank you. Um, one last question, um, and then, um, thanks, Director Brian, for hanging in there with questions.
Well, I keep hearing the discussion of goals and the difference between expectation goals and achievable goals. My question is, why couldn't we put both of those on some of these charts? So that we, we center our target, but we also address the problem of shared Enzo raises, which is that we have to be able to set, say something about what we can get to. You know, and it may not be something that even to get there, which we, it's regularly apparent, we can't get there in one year. But, you know, we could mark, we could probably better track the progress toward it by identifying an intermediate goal. And the, the constraint I always see is, well, you set, you either want to be a big target out there, but you don't know when you're going there. Or, you know, you set the goal too low, you get there and you're satisfied. And we're not satisfied with some of these numbers, even, you know, in the context of getting there. But we need to, I, we need to chart, you know, make, make progress. And as I looked at it, I just said, well, just put both goals down. Expand a chart, add a column and a chart.
You're saying, we, we port one goal, but technically, logistically, but.
Are you saying that the Department of Education would not accept it?
They wouldn't accept two goals. One's all.
Well, I'll write, have it right there. Uh, I'm not trying to hold you on the spot for it, but.
Well, we could internally.
I would encourage any board member, if you have questions or, or more information that you would like, this will come back to us at the next board meeting for an action. So please, um, direct your conscience to Director O'Brien or Superintendent Brzezinski, and, um, they will work with you.
I'm sure.
Great, thank you.
Thanks a lot for doing this.
Okay. Next on our agenda, it's the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve fiscal affairs minutes and human resources?
Someone, second?
Thank you, thank you. Um, any further discussion?
The question.
Where are you going?
Thought it was you. I'm hearing. Oh, I know what the question was. As I read through this and I saw the, I mean, any number of places, but I'll just take the very first one. Under new employment, this position is available at point four FTE. And the, the compensation, oh, let's see. It comes up in the context, oh, I know, where, where they quote hourly rates and say that they will get, they can work up to eight hours, uh, eight hours for twelve months. I was at such a great an hour. Is that eight hours a day or eight hours a week or eight hours a month? Or I, I imagined it wasn't eight hours over a total of twelve months.
No, I think you're, you're looking at a float custodian position specifically there. That'd be an eight hour, eight hour a day position.
Eight hour a day, okay. Okay, yeah, no, that was, you know, I hope, you know, and that is true throughout the, you know, if it's a four-hour position, it's a four-hour a day and so forth. Okay, that's, I just couldn't follow.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All is in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, same side. And then you have, um, retirements.
Yeah, two retirements, in fact. I'm gonna kind of take these two as a pair. They both work in our building and grounds, uh, department. So Dan Becker has served as a carpenter for the district for the last sixteen years. Uh, and Michael Hunt has served most recently, uh, as a custodian at Jefferson, although he's been in, in a variety of positions, uh, for the last seven years. So both, I'm just going to make some comments really in general that apply to both here. Both take great pride in their work, um, and, and, uh, great attitude. You know, frankly, we, we're concerned about some of the losses we, we, we have had and are going to have in our building and grounds department. It's just that it's been a fantastic crew and we're going to have some big shoes to fill as, as we look to, to replace, um, both Dan and, and Mike. So thanks to both and certainly congratulations to both.
All right, thank you. Next on our agenda are policies. These are all review and they all go to Superintendent Brzezinski?
Yeah, I'm going to take these as a batch as well, because they're all so closely aligned in terms of content. So our two oh three series of, of policies all relate to school board operation. Um, everything from rules of order to agenda setting, to what the consent agenda is, et cetera. So you can, you can see there are five policies, actually two oh three, um, up through two oh three point six. And again, in each of these cases, we are current on MSBA, um, model policy language. We do not, the board operations committee reviewed, uh, we do not have any local language, um, recommendations to make at this time. So again, all five of these policies would be review only at this point. We will continue to review them as part of our regular, um, policy review cycle, but no updates recommended, recommended at, at this moment.
Okay, thank you, Director Watkins?
Question on those, we've had folks in the community, I believe even at the board level, talk about having, um, public comment be included within minutes. That's board operations-ish, but I don't know if it fits right in here. Where folks with that interest, where, where would, would it fall within these?
We're gonna actually already, we have a, a board operations meeting next Tuesday is our next meeting. We've already placed that question on the topic for, for board operations next week, just to have some additional conversation. We'll draw some, uh, kind of comparisons to see what other, what other schools do in that same area and, and, um, take it, take the committee level next for some conversation.
If, if something, something proactive came out of that committee, would it fall in this two or three piece?
Possibly, and I would just say this, we can always bring a policy back, right? This could appear again a month from now as, as a first reading, for example. If board operations were to say, gosh, you know, one of these committees should be, have some language adjusted. So just because we are presenting as review only tonight, doesn't, uh, shut the door on this policy coming back sooner rather than later.
Right, any other questions about review? Okay. Um, next on our agenda are the cooperative agreements and, um, dissolution. We've got Superintendent Brzezinski, can we take all three of these at once?
We can, yeah, that's fine. And, and if, um, I'm happy to provide a quick recap or reminder from what we heard two weeks ago, if, if that would benefit, um, the board as well. So, uh, boys tennis agreement, this is simply an addition. So we've got, uh, we don't have any co-ops in place right now on boys tennis. This one would add, uh, Riverway. The second two then are really a pair. So the first dissolution of the existing co-op agreement is just Winona Senior High and Cotter. This is for robotics. Uh, and then the new agreement would add Cotter back in as well as, um, St. Charles and Riverway. So yes, we could take this as a batch.
Are board members comfortable with that, doing all three? Okay, do we have a motion then to approve boys tennis agreement, robotics dissolution, robotics agreement, uh, all at the same time, all in the same motion? So, Nikki, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those?
Just one quick question, Superintendent. Was, uh, Riverway in that, uh, robotics agreement when we originally came forward last meeting?
Oh, yeah, yes, these are the same documents.
Oh, they haven't changed?
Yep, yep, one signature was added, otherwise the, the agreements are the same as we saw last, last meeting, yep.
Sorry, I just remember St. Charles.
That's fine.
Okay, anything else? So we have a motion and a second to approve all three, all is in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, same side, motion carries. Next on our agenda is just a briefing item, it will come back next time. It's LTFM and I asked Sarah to just do a high level on this since we're doing LTFM an awful lot.
Correct, uh, the board would have approved the LTFM plan back in July, I believe. And during conversations with our maintenance department, uh, learned that we've got a roofing project that had been included on that plan that isn't going to happen for a couple of years. That roof just isn't at the point where it needs to be replaced, so why spend money until it actually needs to be replaced? So, um, I have been in touch with the Department of Education. That amount has been pulled off of the levy and we just need to update the ten-year plan so that the two documents are in sync. It's a reduction of expenditures and a reduction of revenue for the same amount. I don't know if anyone has questions, if I need to get further into it, I'm happy to.
Director Watkins?
Senior High. Yeah, just a section of it.
Director Sarah?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment here that as I've sat on the board, uh, the role of LTFM has become increasingly important to how we operate. And I think that, um, I don't hesitate to say, to hear about it virtually, if it were every meeting, it wouldn't bother me. Because I remember the days we talked about deferred maintenance and things weren't getting done and we were falling behind. We needed large sums of money to fix some things, bond issues would come up. I see this as a normal way to go about keeping your plant, your physical plant in good condition.
It helps, it's, it's still not enough. The, the per pupil amount hasn't changed since the inception of LTFM. I believe it's at three hundred and eighty dollars per pupil. Um, and so the legislature could really. Um and so the legislature could really help schools out if they were in reset per per pupil amount.
And if I can give you more opportunity to to soapbox on that, I'll be glad to, because I think you're right, but it it's all that. But I still think that we've come from where we couldn't talk about these things because there was simply no money to now at least we can talk about them and we're coming, we we we're coming up with plans that move us forward and we get to these, and many times I think we look back and say, well, that got done, great.
Right. Any other um questions at this point about LTFM, Director Hadeen?
Yeah, I I don't understand the idea of not levying the the funds. I mean, certainly the idea of deferring the expenditure of the funds is one thing, but doesn't, isn't the levy a set amount of formula where where the funds are gonna come in from from taxpayers under any conditions and then we just allocate where they go?
For some levies, yes, but this one, um you'll remember the last, I believe, legislative, latest twenty-five legislative session, um they added to the levy authority for school districts to be able to levy for roof projects specifically that are over a hundred thousand dollars at at a specific site, so um because the project isn't going to happen, we can't levy for it either.
I see, so this is a, it's almost a, virtually a carve-out for roofs?
Yes.
Hmm, I forgot about this.
Yep, so that's why the reduction, you have to have the expenditure to be able to get the revenue on.
Director Sakeen?
Are we concerned that when we do plan for this, that levy will not be available?
It's a new set of legislation, so um it would take, typically takes a little bit of time to take something out. Um and you know, I had just talked about that three hundred and eighty dollars per pupil, I think this was a way to help districts without changing that three hundred and eighty dollar per pupil. Um I'm not concerned about that changing, uh I think it was something that was very well received by all parties, uh and so, you know, districts need to to fix their roofs, it's just the reality, so I'm not concerned about that.
Director Sakeen?
Yeah, is this the only carve-out so far?
Uh there's, we can do uh additional levy for certain health and safety-related items as well, I believe indoor air quality was one of them. Um oh, you're gonna, I don't recall the rest of them, I could find it in the in the documents, but there are a a couple of others that we're able to levy additional dollars for if the project in itself is over a hundred thousand dollars at the site.
And it sort of parallels, or if it's not technically labeled as LTFM, it is still also kind of parallels the this box of of projects that you you fit into different, you know, I mean, the starts with the basic sum dollars and then for larger projects, they're slowly giving us authority to levy to deal with on the specificity of the project.
Exactly, it starts with that three hundred and eighty dollars per pupil and then there's certain places that we're did, we're able to levy additional dollars dollars for.
Okay. We'll give Director Sakeen.
Yep.
You will see this on our next board agenda and for action. Um next on our agenda are donations, do we have a board member willing to just make the motion to approve? Director Sakeen?
I move that we approve the uh resolution for accepting donations as printed in our agenda.
Is there a second? Director Hadeen, thank you.
Superintendent Brzezinski?
Thank you, from River Town Lions Club, Value Unknown, lunchboxes, winter hats and mitts, and title letters for Goodby Elementary. Uh goods and manufacturing, Value Unknown, sandpaper for the high school woodshop, Walmart, Value Unknown. Lot of boxes, Casey can attest this, we had a lot of boxes of crayons coming into the district office, so let's see, one thousand twenty-four count crayon boxes that were then distributed out to our elementary schools, key kids, elementary enrichment programs. Uh Marie Anderson and Bob uh Bronk, twenty-five pumpkins for WK Pumpkin Decorating Contest, stints and country-style meats. Uh Value Unknown Chicken, sourloin and hamburger for the high school fax department. Derek Brahmert, seventy-five dollars to the Pin Hawk Club, Fraternal Order of Eagles, twelve forty-three, one thousand dollars, the ALC popcorn machine. Dominic Saznowski, two hundred dollars to the Pin Hawk Club, Midwest Design and Construction, one hundred dollars, girls tennis. Winona National Bank, one hundred dollars, girls tennis. Uh Fraternal Order of Eagles, twelve forty-three, five hundred dollars, boys golf. Again, Eagles, three thousand dollars, uh Winona Middle School Art. Jefferson PTA, four hundred and fifty-six dollars, excuse me, uh Nikki folders. Uh Fraternal Order of Eagles, twelve forty-three, one thousand one hundred dollars, supporting the sixth-grade cemetery walk. Uh Eagles again, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, WSHS State Capitol Field Trip. Uh through the WAPZ Foundation, twelve thousand sixty-three dollars and seventy-three cents, supporting Miller Mentoring Program. Uh Fraternal Order of Eagles, twelve forty-three, six thousand dollars, supporting WSHS Wrestling. Constance Meredith, fifty dollars, Hope Squad. Uh Greg and Diane Hankey, two hundred and fifty dollars for the Hope Squad. Winona Burgers LLC, two thousand dollars, supporting FFA. Uh Winona Lodge, number eighteen, uh five hundred dollars, Coats for Kids. Minnesota Masonic Charities, five hundred dollars, Coats for Kids. Doll Automotive, two hundred dollars, girls hockey. And lastly, RTP Company, one thousand dollars, supporting girls hockey, grand total there, twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-three cents.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second to approve, Casey, will you do roll call?
Monica Segre?
Yes.
Michael Henry?
Yes.
Luke Watkins?
I'm standing.
Carl Soneman?
Yes.
Jack Hadeen?
Yes.
And Nancy Dunser?
Yes, and thank you. All right, next on our agenda. Here's announcements, Superintendent Brzezinski?
I'm gonna just say the student reports filled in most of the highlights there and remind board members that we have three December board meetings, we've got our regular meetings on December fourth and eighteenth, we'll have a study session on December eleventh.
Thank you for that, and then um word feedback, we'll start with Director Hadeen.
Uh congratulations to Brittany Steiny as the MIA Teacher of the Year um that the awards banquet and the community partners, business partners that were uh thanked and were acknowledged and thanked at the event on Tuesday as well. Um huge thanks from the board, from all of us. And congratulations, Brittany Steiny.
All right, thank you. Director Soneman?
Um I wanna again highlight the hydroponic garden that uh largely the FFA operates down by the cafeteria, to me, it is one of the most amazing things I can imagine in a high school. Um but I was speaking with the uh the FFA President uh the other night and the most significant thing I got from it was the amount of lettuce that they are able to produce for our food budget and the savings that they are generating. And I actually would like to have her and others come before the board and explain you know, the project, the operation and what it means here. Um it has gotten attention throughout the the state and even the nation. Um and it's one of the things that we can truly be proud of here. I also wanna congratulate the the student council and the uh National Honor Society as well as the staff for putting on the turkey dinner. It was very well attended, very well operated. I wondered in late and saw that they didn't need any help, they were handling it well, so it's very good.
Thank you, Director Watkins.
Oh, nothing tonight, thank you.
Director Segre?
I was able to attend the WK uh family breakfast that occurred on November eleventh, and I just wanted to thank the staff, uh the PTA and just the families for attending, it was overflowing. Um and uh it's just a wonderful event to see the kids and their families and everyone come together for some fellowship in the morning. Um and also, I was able to participate on Tuesday in the Polar Plunge, and I just wanna say what a wonderful event that is, the fact that we raised twenty, over twenty-one thousand dollars is just honestly the icing on the cake to the event. Um the event itself is um such an amazing demonstration of our school coming together. Um it's just amazing to be a part of, so thank you for that opportunity.
Director Tran, ready?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I want to thank uh Teagan to my left and Liam for presenting their reports. Uh very good to hear what's going on in our buildings, um in addition to uh teacher Brittany Steiny winning the Teacher of the Year, I wanna thank um and congratulate Lisa Hockinson and Terry Romer as the education advocates. Dave Jensen is the business advocate and Winona NW Fair Departments as uh receiving awards for community partners. Want to publicly thank and celebrate Linda Jacobson with winning uh her award. Um we both serve the same population and she is a gem to the Winona community. Uh want to thank uh the people who set up the Polar Plunge, but specifically Bill Jacobson and Karen Hemker, I know there's a lot of work that goes into that. Uh and then finally, uh Veterans Day was a few weeks ago and, last week?
Last week.
And so I wanted to um thank everybody from the senior highs, specifically Dwayne, Megan Lee and Jeremy Graves for um setting up what has turned into uh quite a um annual celebration uh that our students get excited to participate in.
Thank you. Teagan? You done talking to him? Um I wanna, you know, double congratulate um Dan Becker and Mike Hunt for all of their years of service in the district, and I hope they can sub, it's a, well, that goes, because, you know, those two are remarkable human beings and they're the kind of people, when you walk in the building and you see them and you know they greet you with a with a pride about the buildings and how well they take care of them, it's uh it's pretty special. Um and especially um uh to Anne, I don't know if she's still back there, but um school-based health clinic and all of the reporting that was done on that, that's a that's something, again, that we can be really proud of and, you know, speak highly of in the district, so um thank you for your work on that and for just making sure that, you know, people know about it and have the opportunity to you know, be served in that way, so appreciate that. Um and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, and a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye, all are fine.
Thank you very much, have a good night and we'll see you.